Ready?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to welcome you to the St. Louis County Planning Commission Virtual Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hillsinger, Chairman of the Committee. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, we have with us the planners assigned to tonight's petition. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports, make a decision on tonight's petition at an executive meeting in late August. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within two weeks of this meeting will be distributed to the Planning Commissioners and their Executive Meeting Agenda Packet. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the County Council, who has the responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning Department staff will show photos of the petition site. Then the petitioner will present the request. They will be allotted fifteen minutes. Then persons in favor and opposition or with concern will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Please note that you may only speak one time. To indicate you wish to speak, click the raise hand icon to the right of your name on the participant list. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, only the petitioner will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After the meeting concludes, a poll will appear, allowing you to indicate whether you're in favor or in opposition or with concern. This is not a vote and is not binding on the Commission or the County Council. Purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. And with that, we'll hear tonight's first petition, which is PC eighteen dash twenty-one, Anna Sullivan.
Good evening. Bringing before you PC eighteen twenty-one, Anna L. Sullivan, to request for a conditional use permit, special procedure in the NU non-urban district. The tract is five point six acres in size. It's located on the northeast side of New Halls Ferry Road, approximately sixty feet west of Old Halls Ferry Road. You can see here on the county contacts that are in North County. And then if you look at the aerial, you can see some of the surrounding land uses, predominantly single-family homes to the east and then it's vacant agricultural land to the west. Just a little more detail on the surrounding land uses. You can see along the east there, along Shackelford Road, you know, single-family is pretty much the only use there is directly opposite Shackelford from the subject site is a childcare facility. And there are some churches as you go south along Halls Ferry. And then to the west, there, you know, immediately across New Halls Ferry is vacant parcel. Shackelford is a church and a T-Mobile tower and then more vacant land. Boeing, all that land that's owned by Boeing is predominantly vacant, undeveloped, sort of more to the west off of the map is their training facility. And then just the aerial kind of zoomed in more on the site to see the immediate context, you know, right there at the intersection of Shackelford and New Halls Ferry and Old Halls Ferry. So this view is looking northeast across New Halls Ferry into the site. You can see the access drive. And then if you're looking, if you're standing in the site looking south directly across from the site is that childcare facility. And then we have an aerial here that's looking east over the site along New Halls Ferry Road. And then you're looking east, we're back down on the ground across New Halls Ferry towards the site, you can see the public notice sign there and then the business sign, Sullivan Farms. This view is looking north along New Halls Ferry. And then this is east of the subject site towards North Fork Ridge off of Shackelford. You see the signs there, anything in the intersection of Shackelford and North Fork Ridge is just an example of the surrounding single-family development. And then this view is looking northwest from Old Halls Ferry into the site. And then we're looking south from North Fork Ridge into the site. The building there is the childcare facility that's just south of the site. And then we're just turning slightly west and looking southwest into the site again from North Fork Ridge. And then the petitioner has a presentation for you.
Hey, petitioner. Good evening, Commission. My name is Andy Braman. I'm an attorney with Curtis Heinz, Garrett and O'Keefe. I'm here on behalf of Anna Sullivan, her power of attorney and son Lynn Sullivan, the operator of Sullivan Farms. So I have a PowerPoint presentation.
Yes, I've made you the presenter now. So if you just click share content at the bottom of your screen and then PowerPoint, it'll, it should come up.
Okay, I can do that. Thank you, Mel. All right, so can everyone see that?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So again, I'm here on behalf of Sullivan Farms. Sullivan Farms operates on the parcel at one six seven oh four New Halls Ferry Road. And, you know, obviously, we're here for our application for a conditional use permit. A little historical background about the property, Sullivan Farms is family-owned and operated. They grow pumpkins onsite as well as on a few nearby parcels. They also grow mums on a few nearby parcels. For more than thirty years, Sullivan Farms has operated an annual pumpkin patch and Christmas tree lot. They've operated that on an annual permit basis under the one oh oh three dot one six seven miscellaneous regulations. There's a special permit for pumpkin patches and Christmas tree lots, and they secured one of those each year for the past thirty years. Sullivan Farms is beloved by North County families. They are a real destination for just good family activities. The kids love it, lots of people, you know, they grew up there, grew up going there as children, and they bring their children back and they make a family tradition out of it. Little bit of site information, the site area is five point zero six acres. It is zoned non-urban, and the current use is farming, namely the cultivation and sale of pumpkins. The existing structures on the lot are a frame greenhouse, a gravel parking lot, the Sullivan Farms business sign, and the Barronwood kennels directional sign. Barronwood kennels is a dog kennel just up the road from Sullivan, just up New Halls Ferry from Sullivan Farms. This is a photo of the proposed site plan. I understand that all the members of the committee have a copy of that in front of them, so we don't need to dwell on this. So the proposed use tonight, what we're asking for a conditional use permit for is for recreational land uses, commercial or nonprofit, under the non-urban conditional use section. As part of its seasonal pumpkin patch, Sullivan Farms wants to offer a variety of attractions that would enhance their draw as a family gathering space, namely, you know, bounce house, corn maze, hayrides, the kinds of things that you associate with other pumpkin patches in the area. I'm particularly thinking of like Stuckmore Farms down in Jefferson County. They have a corn maze and a hayride and things like that. So they'd like to offer those kinds of attractions to just increase the opportunity for families to come out and have a little bit of autumn fun. In order to operate those, however, they require a conditional use permit allowing recreational land uses. The operation of those sorts of amusement attractions are not considered a permitted use by right under the non-urban zoning designation. In addition to the conditional use permit, still be in need for Sullivan Farms to apply on an annual basis for the proper mechanical permits to operate those attractions. There will also be an annual application for the special event permit to operate the Christmas tree lot and the pumpkin patch annually. And historically, they've also been operating on an annual permit basis for temporary electric installations. However, earlier this year, January, February, they did have permanent electric installed, and that has been inspected and approved by St. Louis County. The accessory structures that, there's one proposed accessory structure and one accessory structure which currently exists and will remain in place. The proposed accessory structure to the installation of a pre-engineered storage building. The goal here is to use this building to store the pumpkin patch and tree lot infrastructure during the off-season. That would be, you know, temporary display shelves for the pumpkins, the A-frames that are used to display the Christmas trees, as well as the gear for the hayride. Right now, all of that is stored off-site, and it would just make things a lot easier to be able to store them, I apologize for that, on-site. So the pre-engineered storage building, the proposed location is one hundred and seventy-seven point four feet from the southwest roadway right-of-way line and sixty-two feet from the southeast right-of-way line, about a hundred and three feet from the southeast property line. So there should not be any issues with the setback in that regard. There is also an existing greenhouse and sales building, which will remain in place. That is currently eighty-five point nine feet from the southwest roadway right-of-line, which is the front yard, so to speak. And it is four feet from the eastern right-of-way line, forty-five feet from the property line. Now, you know, reading through the zoning code, I think there's maybe, you know, I at least had some questions about the side and rear yard minimum setback requirements. Namely, it reads that no structure shall be allowed within twenty feet of any property line other than a roadway right-of-line. The way I read that is that, you know, four feet from right-of-way line is acceptable so long as it's, you know, sufficiently distant from the property line. However, if the Planning Commission has a different interpretation of that section of the code, we are willing and ready to petition for a vacation at the county right-of-way. That particular right-of-way is the old Shackelford Road. I know if you look at the aerial, there's a parcel view that is posted on the agenda. It shows where that road was. That has since been, many years ago, that road was vacated. Well, the right-of-way wasn't vacated, but the road was dug up and it is now just grass. So again, if the Planning Commission decides that we need to petition to vacate that right-of-way, we are prepared to do so. There are two existing signs, one for Sullivan Farms, that's a business sign. The other is for Barronwood Kennels, that's a directional sign, as I mentioned, for a kennel up the road. Those are currently in the right-of-way, so we will be removing those signs. And any installation of signs in the future will go through the proper channels to comply with St. Louis County sign regulations. So that should not be a problem. As far as parking, we have calculated parking as four spaces for every one thousand square feet of sales area. We weren't quite sure, working with St. Louis County Surveying and Engineering, whether this would be considered a commercial designation or an agricultural designation for purposes of parking calculation. So we, you know, I think it could fairly fall under food markets, under commercial or produce stands, under agriculture. Either way, those both have a calculation of four spaces for every thousand square feet. The greenhouse sales room provides a little over thirteen hundred square feet of sales area. Plug in the numbers in, you yield six required spaces. However, the gravel lot will occupy twenty-eight spaces, including two accessible spaces. And Sullivan Farms will be implementing a gravel dust grouping method to prevent excess dust from the parking lot. I believe there's already some asphalt milling, which is a dustproof material on there, but we will be working with St. Louis County to make sure everything is up to code. That is all for me. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions?
Yes, this is Lou Cunningham. I was wondering if you had any renderings at all of what you, you know, kind of what you wanted to do there? Any pictures or?
We don't have any renderings. Many of the photos that were showed earlier, I think, give a good idea of what the plan is because, as I mentioned, Sullivan Farms has been operating this farm here for thirty years, and the goal right now is to make sure that operations are brought into line with the county.
Okay, I was speaking specifically of the hayrides and the maze, things like that.
Okay. No, I do not have any renderings of that.
Okay, thank you.
We can provide some if you would like to review those at any date.
This is, this is Nate. What about operating hours for this? What is typical? I'm not familiar with what happened there in the past, but what is the plan for operating hours, days, hours?
So I know the Christmas tree and pumpkin lot generally closes at nine AM, and I believe they open at nine or ten AM.
And what time they close?
I, nine PM. I apologize.
Okay, and that is at seven days a week?
They are during, since it's a seasonal operation, they are operational seven days a week.
Okay, and what about signage and lighting? What's planned for that?
Signage and light, is that what you said?
Lighting.
So right now, there is no plan for signage. We are still discussing how we'd like to proceed with signage. As I mentioned, the two signs that are currently in existence are going to be removed. And then if there is any signage put back up or put up, such as a Sullivan Farms sign, that will go through the proper channels with the Planning Department to make sure that everything is compliant with code.
Okay. I know by definition, you explained where this building would be located. Is there some sort of site plan that shows that the location of that building?
Mr. Steve, are you referencing the proposed pre-engineered building or the currently existing?
Right.
So, yeah, on the, yes, on the site plan, that is up at the northeast corner of the gravel parking lot. There's a little rectangle there. That's the proposed pre-engineered storage building.
Okay, do you have that plan there? Because we don't.
I'll pull it up. Let me pull the plan up really quick.
I apologize.
So this would be the new building. And this is the existing building.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize, Commissioners. I was under the impression that a copy had been distributed.
How many employees will you have, normal? Any idea?
So that I am not sure. I think much of it is done on a volunteer basis. So historically, this has been operated as a fundraiser for the Sullivan's Church and operated in tandem with them. So I believe it is a lot of volunteers. I know, I don't see them in the panel, but I know my client is watching. I do see Heather Sullivan and Lynn Sullivan. They may be able to answer that better than I can.
Yeah, what I was trying to understand was your public parking versus employee parking, is twenty-eight spots enough for you?
Certainly. My understanding is that's enough. Again, if the question is how many employees will need to take up those spaces?
Right.
Is a question that my client could answer better than I could. He could give you a definitive answer, and as I said, he is available. I don't know how we would go about giving him an opportunity to speak if that's possible here or.
Lynn and Heather, either of you should be able to unmute yourselves if you'd like to comment.
So.
Hi, this is Heather Sullivan. We would estimate about two employees during the day and two employees in the night, in addition to family members that are working there.
Okay, is that enough parking for everybody?
Yeah, I would say that we would have enough parking. And also, sometimes if we need to, the employees park offside at my parents' house up the street, and we just kind of go back and forth from there. It's less than a mile up the road.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other Commissioners? Seeing none, we thank you. Mel, you want to take it over from here? If you can see anyone who would like to speak?
If you would like to speak in favor or in opposition or with concern regarding this request, please hit the raise hand button next to your name on the panelist or on the attendee list, and we will call on you and unmute you to give your comment. So first, we have Shalonda Webb. Okay, Councilwoman, you should be unmuted now to give your comment.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mel. I appreciate you so much. I am Shalonda Webb, the Councilwoman of District Four. I'm also a loyal and faithful patriot of Sullivan's Farms. I've been living here twenty-three years almost, and I've gotten my first Christmas tree from there and every year after that. So they're not just a service in providing the Christmas trees and the pumpkin patches, but they are part of the fabric of North County, the part of the North County that we want to preserve, and we want to ensure that they are prosperous. They volunteer, they give back to their church, they live and stay in the community. So it's not one of those situations where they are owners, but they live somewhere else. They are invested in North County, and I want to show them that appreciation and in favor of them, continue to prosper and provide those wonderful things that we want our families to be able to partake in. So I ask East Commissioner, if you have any concerns, please don't hesitate to share them here or reach out to my office, and we will make sure that your current concerns are addressed. And then lastly, I want to thank Sullivan Farms because they have been diligent in making sure that as they being presented with each one of the requirements, that they're here to them. And so I appreciate them. I thank them for being in our community, and we are, as we were yesterday, as we celebrated at their location yesterday with support, we are in total support of them here in North County. Thank you, Mel, and thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, sir.
Anybody? Seeing none, we thank you.
Oh, we have, we, there are a couple more.
Yeah, go ahead.
Next will be LaSawn Johnson. LaSawn, you are unmuted.
Hi, I just had a question about the location for the bounce house and the maze. Are they going to change the location of those?
We can ask them to address that when they speak after everyone's spoken.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next will be David Askuvich, excuse me if I mispronounce that. David, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Yes, thank you. I'm a resident of Old Jamestown, zip code six three oh three four, and we would like to see Sullivan Farms prosper as well as any other possible agricultural endeavor in North County. We feel that brings character and a sense of community pride, as well as supporting, you know, our local businesses.
Okay, I don't see any other raised hands at this time, and if you have spoken, please click the raise hand button again to lower your hand. But I, I don't see any others, Mr. Hillsinger.
Okay, and we just had one question if the petitioner could speak to it.
Yes, so historically, many of the activities and the structures, the sales shelving and whatnot has been consolidated on the southeastern side of the parking lot where there is, where the metal greenhouse is. However, as far as the location of the bounce house, you know, Sullivan Farms wants to be mindful of the location of the right-of-way and not putting things up in the right-of-way if the right-of-way is not vacated. And there's a lot of area on, open area, that's a long way of saying is that the bounce house and the activities will go wherever they can go and still be, you know, approved through the permit and inspection process.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Any Commissioners have any questions? Seeing none, this concludes this hearing, and we thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
And with that, we'll go on to PC nineteen and twenty dash twenty-one McBride Barra Land Company LLC.
As Wayne mentioned, it's PC nineteen and twenty dash twenty-one McBride Barra Land Company LLC requesting a change in zoning from the non-urban district to the R three sometimes a square foot residence district with a PDU in the R three. The tract is forty-one point four three acres in size, and it's located at the southwest quadrant of New Halls Ferry and Shackelford Road. And as we go to the next slide, you'll see that it's directly across the street from the previous petition. So the surrounding menus, the same as the previous petition, is single-family residences to the east across New Halls Ferry, New Halls Ferry Road. And then there's also some south of Shackelford, some single-family. As you go south along New Halls Ferry, there's, there are two churches. There's a church directly adjacent to the, this site to the south. There are several churches south of Shackelford as well. And then as you go further south of Shackelford, kind of off the map, is predominantly single-family. And then most of that land to the north and northwest is owned by Boeing for a training facility that they have. And this is just an area where you can see some of that land use in context. This view is an aerial view looking north along New Halls Ferry. You can see most of the subject site is currently vacant agricultural land. And then this view is looking northwest, we're a little bit further south on Shackelford, looking along that tree mass and creek that runs through the center of the subject site. And then this view is looking south along. And then this view is looking south along Shackelford Road, come to the southwest. And then this view is looking west across the subject site. And then here, we're at the intersection of New Halls Ferry and Shackelford Road, so we're, the perspective is you're on the, the subject site, you're looking east across the intersection, out from the site. And this view is north along New Halls Ferry Road. And then we're looking north from the church that's just south of the subject site, looking on Shackelford into the, into the site. And then this view is northeast and along New Halls Ferry, you can get an idea of the surrounding single-family development. And I guess some of the local wildlife there as well. And then we're looking south towards the, the subject site, there is an entrance drive to the Boeing facility. And then this view is southwest at that intersection of New Halls Ferry and Shackelford Road, so you're, you're across New Halls Ferry and you're looking back towards the, the site along Shackelford there. And the petitioner has a presentation to be listening.
Okay, thank you.
Catherine, I've, I've made you the presenter now.
Thank you Mel. Can the commission see the slideshow in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Good evening commissioners, my name is Catherine Moore and I'm here on behalf of McBride Homes. And tonight I will do my best to speak as briefly as possible because we have two projects on your agenda, which is a first for me. Both of these projects on the commission's agenda tonight are joint ventures between McBride Homes and Beara Construction. And as industry leaders of the region, we team up on quite a few projects together and have a joint land development company. So that company, Elite Development Services, would be the land developer of this project if approved. And McBride Homes would be the home builder. To tell you a little bit about our company, we are the largest home builder in the state of Missouri and we are proudly the largest union home builder in the country. We've been building communities in the metropolitan area for over 75 years and we're currently building in 31 neighborhoods. So we have a substantial amount of experience working in and with St. Louis County that we're very proud of. And we're very excited to debut this project for you, which we're calling Riverstone. So your planning staff just did an excellent job of introducing the location of the site to you, it's located at New Halls Ferry Road and Shackelford Road in North St. Louis County and here is an aerial of the project site. And we're just, we're overjoyed to be back in North St. Louis County, it's been a while since we had a project in the north area. The team with me here tonight is our president of land development, Jeremy Rock, he's also the president of Elite. Our project manager, Chris Cutler, and our project engineer, Mike Faulkner, the stroke company. So any questions you may have about this project, one of us will be able to address those. So to tell you a little bit about this site, it is 41.4 acres and it is currently zoned non-urban. And it is vacant and currently underutilized, as was mentioned before, it is surrounded by property-owned by the community or a retreat venue, a retreat center is my understanding. But there's quite a bit of residential development in the area as well. The application pending before the commission tonight is to rezone this site from NU to R3 with a planned environmental unit designation. So here is a zoning map of the site, you'll see that bright green NU, that is mostly Boeing property and then the farm property that we just heard about as part of your last application. But you'll see this area has quite a bit of residential development that ranges from R2 to R3 to R4. So the Riverstone project for tonight will fit right in with the current land uses in this area. Here is a color site plan of the Riverstone project over an aerial photograph. And this exhibit does a wonderful job of showing you how we're working with the site's natural features and topography to provide a significant amount of common ground and a significant amount of open space and tree preservation, which we're really excited about for this project. The project features for Riverstone include 160 single-family detached residential lots. This will feature McBride's extremely popular and sought-after Bayside Home Products series. New streets and new sidewalks will provide for access and pedestrian access to this project. And as I mentioned, there's significant common ground and 53% tree preservation. That common ground totals 11.22 acres and it's just quite an amazing feature of this project. So to tell you a little bit more about our single-family homes, as I mentioned, it's McBride's Bayside Series Home Products, which consists of a variety of ranch and two-story home elevations to choose from. All of these homes will come with two-car garages, fully-sided yards and landscape package standard. And various elevations are offered for each of the home products that we build in part of this series, many of them have stone and brick accents available. We believe the Riverstone project will be fully complementary to the existing surrounding residential land uses in this area but bring new modern housing options to this part of North County where great residential communities exist. And this will just provide another opportunity for current and future residents of St. Louis County to find those sought-after modern home products. So here are some photographs of some of our Bayside Series homes, you'll see some two-story and some ranch homes in these two slides. Rezoning here from NU to R3 with the PEU designation makes sense because it allows for that cohesive community to be developed with that common ground as a central feature to work with the creek and the site's topography constraints. And again, bring those new housing options to this part of North County. We believe that this will fit in with the area and work out nicely with those adjacent uses and I would, and I mean, knowing that there's that wonderful Christmas tree pumpkin farm right across the street, I just think that's wonderful, this, this will fit in great with that area. So we are so excited to be back in North St. Louis County with this project. And we appreciate the commission's consideration and hopefully positive recommendation on this rezoning request and on the preliminary site development plan for our Riverstone project. And with that, our whole group is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners?
I have one. What's the, what's the lot size, did I miss the?
Oh, the lot sizes here, there's a bit of a range. The average lot size is 6,751 square feet. The minimum lot size is 5,427 and then the largest is 9,848. So they vary quite a bit, but with the mid being about 6,700 being the average.
Okay, how close are you as far as the entrance to the Boeing entrance, are you pretty close to that?
Uh, we are, oh, let's see. Let me pull this back up. If I can still share my screen, here we go. And let me go to the appropriate slide. See, the Boeing's entrance, if you can see my cursor, is this long bush drive right here. So you'll see that our lots do back up to it, but there's just open green on the side of their drive aisle here, their buildings are very, very, very far removed from where our new homes are proposed to be.
Okay, so the backyards of those homes that are over there on that side, how close are they to the drive to the Boeing building?
Uh, I would not be the best one to answer that question, Chris Cutler or Mike Faulkner, do you happen to know how close we are to the Boeing access drive? Hello?
Sorry, this is Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
You talking about the entrance road to the Boeing, is that what you're asking me?
Yes, they're asking what this distance of this green space is, Chris, between the access drive and the rear of our lot.
Oh, okay, I can tell you that real quick, just a second. It looks like it's about 115 feet.
Okay. Now, what's the square footage of each property, the average square footage?
Are you asking about the interior square footage of the homes?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yes, these products vary quite a bit. Our smallest is just shy of 1,200 square feet, but that doesn't include the full finished basement. And then they go up to over 2,700 square feet and that doesn't include the full finished basement. So you can get quite a bit of living space depending on which model you choose from in this series.
Have you been able to price it out yet? Because, I guess because of the lumber fluctuation, have you guys?
Well, we always, we always do our best and I spoke with our president this afternoon. And he thinks that the starting price will be in the mid-2s, but once our home buyers have the opportunity to pick out their interior finishes and selections from our design studio, that really adds value to their home and they can personalize it. So the starting price won't necessarily be the average sale price, it's all up to the home buyer and how, how much they want to add in their interior selection, so I'd say mid-2s to low to mid-3s.
Okay, so about 250 is where the starting price is?
Yes.
Okay. And let me see. Okay, I think, oh, you plan on putting any lakes or anything like that in there? Fishing lakes or?
Any lakes, no, there is a creek that runs through that green space you see through the center, so the forested areas and the creek is just going to be very, very pretty authentic, natural green space, forested, and that is there's no need for any sort of additional water feature here when there's already water on, on site and I don't, we have no detention ponds meant to stay wet on here for some water, that I'm aware of at least.
So you use that for detention ponds more or less?
We're not using this for detention, no, we didn't need any detention. You'll see in this aerial in front of you, there are various, there are various detention areas, but they're meant to be dry.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Hey, anyone else? Seeing none, we thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll take comments, Mel?
Okay, so we have a couple speakers lined up, the first one doesn't have their, oh, they're gone. We'll start with Wesley Ford, Fordice. Excuse me if I mispronounced that. Wesley, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Yes, thank you, I've been looking at these plans, I'm very interested, I'm a neighboring homeowner. I noticed that although on average, the, there are 160 houses on 41 acres. The average lot size is less than an eighth of an acre, which is far below the average in the community. These are much smaller lots than in all of the surrounding developments. They're only able to raise their average lot size because of the undevelopable creek land and the required detention ponds because of all the runoff they're going to create with huses, driveways and roads and sidewalks. So I would just like the planning commission to consider requesting that they conform to the size, lot size that currently exists in the surrounding community.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Okay, next is a speaker who didn't put their name, so it says NA, if you could state your name for the record and give your comment?
Yes, I, I would like for my name to remain anonymous, but I just wanted to, to state for the record that I purchased a home, a McBride home, in one of their more recent neighborhoods. And we've been having all types of problems with, with the home, so I'm concerned about the quality of homes that they're building in, in North County. On a new, on a new home, you would be surprised, but items that were supposed to last for a long period of time, we, we've already had to replace those things. And they left, they left us out high and dry. They, you know, they didn't provide us any support and things like that. And so I'm just concerned that if we let them build another community in North County, are they going to bring quality? Or will, will the homeowners be stuck like us? And basically footing the bill twice, we've already paid for our home and then major energy to get them right now because McBride has left us high and dry.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Okay, next will be Kevin Brooks. Kevin, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Okay, great, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, great, so thank you for your time, I'm a resident and also a future home buyer. I'm truly excited about the Riverstone project, but in the last past 10 years, McBride has had a history of developing great homes, of course, and of land development in the area. My question is really about the current blueprint and single-family home lots. In other community, there has been a history of offering a larger structure of an array of homes such as the Sequoia, Nottingham, permanent two. I noticed that the largest available home is the Ashford. Do you plan on, do you plan on offering single-family homes at the future request of home buyers, considering that you're in the early stage in your plans? You know, the surrounding homes, of surrounding areas, they offer a little bit larger homes. Actually directly right, the river, I forgot the name of the last project, but it's directly right across the street. Maybe a development 10 years ago, so my question, yeah, is do you plan to offer larger-sized homes? If the community has a larger request?
Okay, we'll ask them to address that when they go to rebuttal.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, appreciate your comments.
Okay, next will be Judy, Judy, if you could give us your last name for the record, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Oh, okay, thank you. I am Judy Moore and I'm a resident across the street from where you're starting to consider building and I'm also interested in the fact that it would be nice to just put the word out for you that we would like larger homes and larger lots, maybe you could build fewer than what are you building, 100 feet? You could build some in, in the lots that are larger with, by building fewer homes. So that you can make residents an average of at least 2,000 square feet with some yard space. That's just my question.
Okay.
I would really appreciate that.
We'll have it addressed. Thank you for your comments. Mel, anyone else?
Yeah, we have a couple more. Next will be Christie Love. Christie, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Um, yes, I was wondering, the common ground that you have there on Shackelford, is that going to be kept common ground or will that be possibly future commercial development? And also, has anyone contacted Boeing to find out what their reaction to a development like this is since they have, you know, a large presence so close by?
Okay, we'll ask that be addressed.
Okay, next will be Diane K. Diane, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Thank you, good evening, commission, I, I would also like to address
I, I would also like to address a lot size as a previous person. I too live in the area on a three-acre lot. The houses that had to be built, that, that backed up to three-acre lots all had to be one acres or larger. So that area that backs up to Boeing's driveway and that, those lots are not in an acre in size, and yet they back up to several acres. So I would like the commission to consider that those lots, in keeping with the other property that we have in the area, be raised to one-acre lots. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next will be Shalonda Webb. Councilwoman, you are unmuted.
Thank you again, Mel, and thank you, Commission, for allowing me to speak. So as a representative of the, the area, we are excited about having a new development. And with the longstanding history of McBride and Sons, we are familiar with their products. I do ask, and have an opportunity to express my concerns of the community. I do ask, as the others have, that you consider lot size and understand the community that you're, that you're servicing and the needs and desires of the community. I am very appreciative of developers and business owners who do listen to the community and make sure that their thoughts and their, that their thoughts are taken into real consideration. And another question that I've been getting in my office is that they, the green space that you're going to leave, that boat, that overgrown area, who's going to maintain that? I've gotten that several times in reference to other creek areas that have that growth. And then there are times when there is an overgrowth and they're finger pointing of who's responsible for maintaining it. And so all of those things, I think we should take in consideration with this development, maintaining that common size, ensuring that the homes that you're building provide a level of excellency to the community that you are servicing, and the lot size be representative of such. And thank you again for allowing me to speak.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman.
Okay, I think we have one more. Lassonne Johnson. You are unmuted to give your comments.
Hello again. I did have a question or a concern about the lot sizes also. If they are going to be less than .8 of an acre, that seems like that's awfully small. I'm not sure how big Herman's, Archer, or Joe's Farms, how, how big those lot sizes are, but 160 houses seems like an awful lot of houses to put in a small space. And then my other question or concern was, are there going to be any residential amenities, like a clubhouse for this subdivision? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And then there's actually one more, I believe. Next is David Askewich. I apologize again. David, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Okay, thank you. And my wife and I are new to the area, Old Jamestown, miles down the road. And one reason we were attracted to this part of the area was the green space, the natural setting, the trees especially. And the, the temperature in this part of town is about four to eight degrees cooler than the urban, urbanized area fluorescent. So, but that's one thing that I'm concerned about is the urban heat island and overall global warming. And I would like to see not just 53% of the trees preserved, but 100%. I think we're living in a time right now where we need to be more proactive than reactive and try to really be staunch with the kind of trees we have left in North County. And so I would like to see more as far as tree preservation and efforts to conserve the natural beauty in North County. So as of such, I, is the plan that is presented at this, I am against.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Mel, anybody else?
I believe that is all the speakers for this petition.
Okay, Catherine, you want to give us a rebuttal?
Uh, yes, thank you. Bear with me. I, I took notes. So I'm just going to go in order of comments made by members of the public. So there was a comment, and I'm only going to mention it once, but various members of the public asked us to look at lot size and reexamine lot size. The home products and the lot sizes that we're proposing for this project are in line with a whole series of our other recent projects throughout St. Louis County. And we looked at lot sizes across Shackelford. And I'm not sure the name of the subdivision, but there the average lot size was 6,800. Our average lot size is 6,700. So we're not deviating greatly from the area. We're consistent with some of the area development. So that would be my comment about lot size. The market as we know it, as, you know, the largest home builder in the state, is that more and more time our market would like a nicer, more luxurious home on a small lot because they're not home to maintain that lot. So we find that this particular lot size and this particular home product is quite a need and quite a market in the St. Louis County area, in the St. Charles County area, pretty much anywhere. This is what our homebuyers are looking for. As far as, I'm not going to focus on the quality issue. We stand by our products. We stand by our warranties. We offer a one-year, two-year, and 10-year warranty to all new homebuyers. Those types of warranties and protections are not provided to people who buy existing homes. And they're not provided by many homebuilders in the area. So I'm proud of the quality of our homes and not knowing the community or the situation, I can't get more than about that one particular commenter's comments. Moving on, as far as larger homes, as I mentioned, the largest home here would be 2,700 square feet, not mentioning the footprint of the finished basement. And we allow deep pores in our basement. You can have high ceilings. It's a ton of living space. So that would be, I, I mean, something around a 3,200-square-foot house. These are nice sizable houses. Only one of them is a smaller ranch that is under 1,200 square feet. That's our only two-bedroom that we offer. And many people looking for a single-family home, but looking to downsize if they're empty nesters or looking to buy their first home if they're a young professional, that's perfect for them. You'll find that most of the homes are going to be those three- and four-bedroom home models that are far in excess of that 1,200 square foot. And we offer quite a few different models in this community. Let's see, the common ground will be maintained by the homeowners association that will perform for this community. So that will be funded to begin with, and then funded through annual assessments throughout. So they will always be able to have control of and maintain that green space located in this community. As far as residential amenities, we're really looking at this really neat way the common ground, the creek, and the trees kind of cross through the middle community and be a park-like, open green space common ground area. However, you know, if it is the appetite of the commission, we can look and see. I can talk to our sales and marketing team and see if there's something else we can do here. But as of right now, we actually thought this was quite a beautiful open space amenity for the community. As far as tree preservation, we're preserving 53% of the trees on this site, which is quite a high percentage. And as far as having one-acre lots, preserving more trees, the fact of the matter is that this property is for sale. We have it under contract, and it's largely surrounded by existing residential subdivisions. So what we're looking to do here is work with those trees and work with the natural features of that site and have a residential community that will blend well in the area. So we're trying to work with those matters, but of course, we can't preserve all of the trees or leave it as a park. You know, this is a residential area and it's for sale. And we're looking to develop it to provide new home opportunities to this area. And then I think the last question that I saw that I didn't touch on was, has anyone spoken to Boeing? I personally have. I've spoken to a gentleman in their real estate department, not to mention the public here who noticed, that I'm sure it was mailed to them as being an adjacent property owner. They're aware of this project. They've seen the plan that's before the commission tonight. They didn't really express concerns, and we had a chat about good neighbors and about being good neighbors. And that's, that's where it left off. I've heard from no one else. But they're monitoring this project and they have my contact information. I think I hit everything on my list.
Did you address the common ground along Shackelford?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did miss that one. All of the common ground will remain common ground. McBride is not a commercial developer. We plaid the common ground. We plaid it as part of the community, and then it gets deeded to the homeowners association. So it will not be marketed for commercial use by McBride. That'll be there for the community as open green space.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? So I, I guess, this is Bill. I guess you're saying that the, someone was wondering about the creek, who maintained that part of the creek in there? Is that going to be given to the homeowners or?
The homeowners association will hire a property management company and will fund the maintenance of all common ground areas.
Okay. And I think there was a question about commercial.
Yes, I just addressed that. And that's that none of the common grounds going to be sold off for commercial purposes. It's all being platted as common ground, and then ownership will be turned over to the homeowners association.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, anyone else?
This is Cunningham. You're basically saying that lot size is, basically it is what it is, and there's no room for adjustment or consideration of larger lot sizes?
If this, if this commission had concerns about density, I can absolutely take them back to our team to look at. This is the best plan for our economics, but also for the need in the housing that we are building in other parts of St. Louis County and haven't had the opportunity to bring to this part of St. Louis County. So we're finding that this is really sought after in the county. This is what our executive team and our marketing department think would be a really great fit here. If the commission as, as a whole says that there's an, that you'd like to see larger lots, we can look at that. But as I mentioned, these are consistent with the community across Shackelford. This is not as a strong deviation from what's already in the area, which is our two and our three zoning districts.
Thank you.
We can look at anything that the commission desires as a whole, but this is what we in our expertise and experience think would be a thriving community.
This is Ballard again. I think one of the homeowners mentioned some other homes that you did not have listed. Would you be amenable to listing those or including those?
Though, that is a completely different home product series. That being said, some of those homes may fit on some of these. I don't, I don't know. Our marketing team was not planning on, we weren't planning on building that particular home product line here. But I, I'm not saying yes, or I'm not saying no. I, I will, we can look at that. But that's a different home product than what we, we are envisioning for this community.
So what you're saying, that would drive the lot size then?
I'm sorry, sir?
I said, what you're saying is that those homes would drive a larger lot size?
Yes, our Oakwood Series homes don't necessarily need a larger lot size per se, but they need a wider lot size per se because that home product has a slightly wider footprint than our Bayside Home Product Series, which is what we are proposing and desired to construct in this community. But they all have this similar features, similar floor plans, open space living, walk-in closets, huge master bedrooms. They're, they're similar in the amenities and features that you can have.
Okay. Anyone else have anything? Seeing none, that concludes this hearing. And we will go to PC 21 and 22 dash 21 McBride Barrow Land Company.
Let me bring the presentation back up.
Okay, we have PC 21 and 22-21 McBride Barrow Land Company with a request to rezone an R3 to R4 with a PEU in the R4, a 3.06-acre tract of land in the southwest quadrant of Tesson Ferry Road and Walden Ridge Drive. So here on this slide, you can see that the tract of land is located in South St. Louis County. We have a close-up aerial where you can see the tract outlined in red. On this next slide, we have the land use map. Currently, the site is overflow parking for the Concord Baptist Church, which is directly across Walden Ridge Drive. Adjacent to the site, there are attached single-family dwellings. To the north of the site, we have the church, which has a large detention pond. Further to the north, we have more multifamily, as well as some more single-family residential. Hegeman Elementary School is just to the east of the tract. And around Hegeman, there's more single-family residential and, you know, a few vacant parcels. So here we have an aerial of the site. As you can see, it is currently being used as a parking lot. And it's at the intersection of Walden Ridge Drive and Tesson Ferry Road. On this next slide, this is facing the Concord Baptist Church sign at the intersection of Walden Ridge Drive along Tesson Ferry Road. Next, this is at the southwest area of the tract. This is the, currently one of the western entrances of the site. This is the eastern entrance of the site, just still along Walden Ridge Drive. This is if you are standing at Tesson Ferry, looking into the back of the site towards the western property line. This is looking back along the southern property line towards the edge of the site. This is looking at the current retaining wall in the southwest corner of the site. This is if you were standing at the western property line, looking towards the eastern portion of the site onto Tesson Ferry Road. This is directly across the street. You can see the Concord Baptist Church. This is at the entrance to the attached single-family dwellings. This is an aerial, aerial of the site looking north over Walden Ridge. And then this is another aerial looking south along Tesson Ferry. And next, we have the petitioner's presentation.
Okay, Emily, thank you.
You're welcome.
Petitioner?
Petitioner?
Okay, Catherine, you should have the presenter role again. It's coming up now.
Okay, well, it's not really letting me share it as a slideshow, so I'll just go slide by slide. Commissioners, again, it's a little time. My name is Catherine Moore. And I'm here on behalf of McBride Homes. And I previously introduced you and gave you some history about our company McBride Homes and our land development company. So I will skip that and jump right into our newest project, which is the towns at Walden Ridge. So it's moving ahead. Here is an aerial of the project site. You already saw some photographs of the site. And as was mentioned, it's located at Walden Ridge Drive and Tesson Ferry Road Incorporated, South St. Louis County. The site is just over three acres in size and it's currently zoned R3. As was just mentioned, it is currently an excess church parking lot, so it remains underutilized. We have the property under contract from the church. The closest improved properties are Concord Baptist Church, which is across Walden Ridge Drive, and then the Walden Ridge Villa Community that you just saw some photographs of. It is currently zoned R3 and the application pending before this commission tonight is to rezone it to R4 with the planned environmental unit designation. So here is a zoning map of the area. And you'll see a large amount of R3. And that includes the Villa Community that is adjacent and the church that's adjacent. And then there's that NU area across Tesson Ferry Road. So in planning this project, as we often do, we met with the trustees, because there is such a close in proximity existing community. We met with the trustees of the Walden Ridge Villa Community. And we previewed this project for them. In those discussions, they informed us that there was recently a drive to or an application to rezone this site to commercial. And they said they strongly opposed that because they really did want to see only residential in this area. The church was going to sell that parking lot parcel. And so our current proposal for you tonight is maintaining that residential land use that those neighbors wanted to see back then when they were in opposition to commercial development on this site. So here is a color site plan of what we're proposing for the towns at Walden Ridge. And as was mentioned, this is currently largely a parking lot. So there wasn't, you know, any tree preservation that we could do, but we did plan to still keep a lot of green common open ground, open space common ground. And from this plan, you can see that there is a large area separating the new homes proposed that would be closest to that Villa Community, which is just one home and one detached garage. There's a berm, an existing tree coverage, and that Villa Community's common ground. So when you really look at the distance between the newly proposed structures and the existing villas, there is quite a bit of distance there in separation. So we did rest assured the trustees of the neighboring community that that berm and their trees will remain intact, that we will not be going onto their property or disturbing that separation in any way. So an R4 with PEU really does seem to make sense here when you look at the surrounding area and the size of the piece that we're working with. So the towns at Walden Ridge Project features are 14 single-family detached lots. And the really exciting and interesting part of this project is the products we wish to build here. This will be our first time proposing this in St. Louis County. It's our Belissimo product series. This was a recently developed series for our project that's almost completely sold out, located in the middle of St. Louis City. So it's every home elevation has brick frontages. It's modeled after traditional St. Louis architecture. And these are very sought after. And as I mentioned, the only ones that we're currently building them and currently building them in is about sold out. Access will be off one privately maintained alleyway to those rear garages. Common ground of the site is 43%. We are keeping quite a bit of that open. There will be visitor parking also planned. And as I mentioned, bringing this new product line to St. Louis County is just a really neat feature and we think that it will be really, really appreciated and in demand. So to tell you about these home products that you've never really seen, I mentioned they've got traditional St. Louis style architecture. They come in two-story and three-story models with two-car detached garages standard. Fully sited yard plans being provided. And they have various elevations to choose from, but as I mentioned, they all will have brick included in those. And we do believe that this will be complementary to the area with that residential land while bringing a new potential housing product to current and future St. Louis County residents. So here are some of the front elevations of those two-story homes. And here are some of the three-story elevations there. So R4 with PEU is appropriate for this particular property due to the proximity to Tesson Ferry, due to the small site and due to it being an underutilized parking lot. This community will bring those new housing options and improve the aesthetics of the area and from those driving along Tesson Ferry Road. This will really be a great addition to this area. And as I mentioned, this is a decline heavily by the church. And that is why we have it under contract with them as our seller. So we're really, we're just chance here to bring this product to St. Louis County. And we're available to answer any questions that the commission may have. And we appreciate your consideration of our rezoning application and preliminary development plan before you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions?
Yes, this is State. Could you put up the site plan again for showing the houses?
Yes, here you go. Those are houses along Walden Ridge Drive, fronting the drive. But the access will be through rear alleys to their individual two-car garages with their lots in between the garage and the home.
Okay, is there parking on Walden Ridge Drive?
None.
There is parking.
We will not be parking along Walden Ridge. You see our visitor parking. Each home has a two-car drive and a two-car garage.
Okay, but there would be parking on Walden Ridge Drive if you so choose to park on Walden Ridge Drive?
I don't believe so. As I sit here today, I'm not sure if there's any no parking signs, but I wouldn't think so. As you see, there's turn lanes delineated. And our project engineer just sent me a message and said there is no parking along Walden Ridge Drive.
Okay, because I think the elevations you showed appeared to have space for parking on Walden Ridge. And I was just trying to.
Those were actual photographs of these homes constructed in the hill. Those are not photographs or renderings of this particular project. They were to show you what these homes look like in real time.
Okay, are these, Catherine, are these homes similar to the ones that you all built on Grant's Farm?
No, well, I mean, those are our row home product. These are completely different elevations and completely different interior floor plans. Our architecture team just developed these homes about two years ago when we acquired that ground in the hill. So these are different, but I can understand how you get a similar feel because I know what those Grant's View homes look like, but these are completely different inside and out.
And what's the square footage of these homes? They range from?
They range from 1,400 to 2,100.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Seeing none, take comments. Melissa?
Okay, so if you would like to make a comment regarding this petition, please click the hand next to your name on the attendee list. It might also be at the bottom right-hand corner of your screen. We will start with Michelle Arnt. Michelle, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Yes, we live just south of the proposal. Do I have you guys?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so this meeting is strictly and solely about zoning, my understanding is, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so my only problem with the zoning would be that the area in which we live, and everybody lives in this R3 area, is, has the luxury of the density of people that are currently here and what is currently zoned. And if we go, if we change the zoning, then the density obviously is going to get tighter. So, so I am not in favor of a zoning change for this application.
Okay, thank you.
So is that Mr. Arnt, what's your first name, please?
My first name is Scott.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next will be Jay Arnt. Jay, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Okay, very good. Am I on now?
Yes, you are.
Very good. I seen the picture there that was presented just a moment ago about the two and three-story structures. However, long about three days ago, there was a article in the St. Louis Business Journal about this particular zoning situation here we're talking about, written by Gloria Lloyd of the Business Journal on July 16th. And they, and they were, the petitioner indicated that these are going to be similar to the La Clona project on the hill. And then she took pictures of that project and those are unlike the pictures I'm seeing here on what the presentation is going on now. However, let me continue on. The adjacent community Walden Ridge, to the west of the petitioner's property, was developing R3 zoning. Even on the plot that was presented here a few moments ago by the petitioner, all the adjacent properties are R3. Likewise, the adjacent neighboring 16 acres subdivision to the south of development is under R3 zoning, which is our, my property. The entrance, or shall we say the presentation of these only two adjacent properties is the petitioner's property as per an article, the pictures from the St. Louis Business Journal. The type of residences to be built under R4 zoning would mimic the petitioner's existing project in the city of St. Louis. The proposed residences would be what is typically termed as flats, row housing or shotgun homes of some vintage name there. That one-room wide, two or three stories high and built very, very close proximity. This is totally inconsistent with the presentation of the surrounding R3 mentioned communities. They will not be complementary to the adjoining R3 communities as was stated in the petitioner's petition there. Since our assessed values appreciate on the county tax rolls vis a vis liking comparable values of neighboring properties, there's no gain for neither the St. Louis County nor the adjacent property owners to degrade to a higher density. The value of petitioner's property has been appreciated over the years relative to and because of R3 zoning. The value or price point of said property should support its development under R3 zoning. To degrade the petitioner's property to an R4 zoning, thus allowing higher density, would advantage only the developer and the seller. I thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I would be happy to, about my statements, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Okay, thank you. Questions, anyone? Okay, seeing none, we thank you.
At this time, I don't see any other speakers. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand. Click the raise hand button next to your name. But I, I don't see anyone else.
Okay. Catherine, you want to address a couple items there?
Sure. I didn't quite, I didn't necessarily follow certain discussion in there. But the main point I got from both of the gentlemen speakers is that they oppose the zoning because they think that the project is too dense. Here, we're dealing with just over a three-acre site located in the intersection of Tesson Ferry and Walden Ridge Drive. This is not a site where you're going to see large lot residential. Here, we've got an amazing use, an amazing opportunity to bring single-family detached homes to a site where the neighboring residents oppose the commercial uses or more typically along a major roadway such as Tesson Ferry. This is slightly higher density admittedly than R3, but it fits in with the site, the location and the proximity to that roadway. Furthermore, these are all detached, single-family homes with five-foot side yard setbacks that are required in larger-scale residential neighborhoods as well. This is not, you know, zero lot line development. It's a traditional home with untraditional architecture that fits a need that isn't in this area. And the attached community, while it is R3 zoning, those are all attached villas that share walls. We believe this project is completely consistent with R3. It's in between almost of a Villa Community and of a single-family traditional larger lot detached community. This really is a niche type of development. And as far as the property values go, rezoning this in accordance with our application will do nothing to hurt property values. A not, a not beautiful, barely used parking lot, I would think, could injure property values. Whereas here, the homes that we intend to build here, our president owns one of these homes in the hill. These homes are going to start in the mid $300,000 and go up from there based on our home buyer's selection of their interior features that are designed to be up, where they could really add value. Some of these could go in the mid floors. You don't know what their selections are going to be. This is not some sort of, you know, lower quality development. This is a very high-quality development and just an exciting new product for the area.
Is this the same product as you're building on the hill?
Yes, that we're nearly sold out of. I think we have under four lots left at the hill.
Wow, okay. Thank you. Questions, anyone? Seeing none, we thank you and this concludes this hearing.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Melissa, do we have anything else? No site plans?
No site plans, no executive session today. For the attendees who are still here, when you leave the meeting, you should receive a survey should pop up asking if you are in favor of the requests tonight, in opposition or with concern. And then for the commission, we will have an executive meeting a week from tonight, Monday, July 26th. But that's all I've got.
Okay, with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, and we are adjourned. Till next time.
Okay, see you next week.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.